From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Gleason.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggard.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Thank you, and welcome to the Tuesday, May 23, 2017, meeting of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. We're going to begin today's meeting with the flag salute, and that's going to be led by our Fire Chief, Brian Marshall. And I'd ask that everyone remain standing for a moment of silence to remember Fire Engineer Brian Massey, who had a serious medical event on Saturday night and unfortunately passed away. It's a huge loss to the department. Chief Marshall, please.
Supervisor Scrivner, members of the board, it's truly a tragedy within the Fire Department as we lost Engineer Massey. A 27-year veteran of the fire service, he served the citizens of Kern County for the last 10 years as a fire engineer, and it's truly rocked our organization. At this time, please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Chief, thank you so much. Our thoughts and prayers go out to his family, his children, and your organization. Next on our agenda will be our consent agenda. And if you'd like to follow along with our agendas today, they're located on the two back tables by the exits. And starting on page two, we have items four through eight on consent. On page three, we have items 12 through 17 on consent. On page four, items 18 through 22 are on consent. And on page five, items 25 through 32 are on consent. Page six, all items 33 through 41 are on consent. On page seven, all items 42 through 50 are on consent. On page eight, items 51 through 58 are all on consent. Page nine, all items 59 through 66 are on consent. On page 10, we have items 67 and 68 are on consent. Item 69 is going to be pulled off of consent at the request of Supervisor Maggard. And items 70 through 75 are all on consent. So we'll hear 69 enlisted sequence. On page 11, items 76 through 83 are all on consent. Page 12, all items 84 through 92 on consent. And finally, on page 13, items 93 through 96 are all on consent. Do we have any members of the public that would like to make a comment on any item on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. I'll return to the board.
Motion on consent.
May we have a motion in a second? Please cast your votes.
Chairman Scrivner, my voting machine is not working properly. Could we have a voice vote?
Yes. Do you want to...
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, then now we'll return to page two on our agenda, under Resolutions and Proclamations. First is item one. This is a proclamation to proclaim May 23 through 29, 2017, as Veterans Memorial Week in Kern County, and Supervisor Gleason will make this presentation.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, motion carries.
Honored to be here today, in honor to proclaim the week, May 23 through 29, 2017, as Veterans Memorial Week in Kern County, signed by the Honorable Zach Scrivner, Chairman of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. Couple things, three years ago, excuse me, three years after the Civil War ended on May 5, 1868, the head of an organization of Union veterans, the Grand Army of the Republic, established Decoration Day as a time for the nation to decorate the graves of the dead with flowers. Major General John A. Logan declared Decoration Day be observed on May 30. It is believed that date was chosen because of a seasonal growth of flowers, they'd be blooming all over the country. The first lodge observance was held that year at Arlington National Cemetery, across the Potomac River from Washington, DC. By the end of the 19th century, Memorial Day ceremonies were being held on May 30 throughout the nation. State legislators passed proclamations designating the day, and the Army and Navy adopted regulations for proper observances at their facilities. It was not until after World War I, however, that the day was expanded to honor those who died in all American wars. In 1971, Memorial Day was declared a national holiday by an act of Congress, though it is still often called Decoration Day. It was then also placed on the last Monday in May, as were some other federal holidays. With a multitude of events surrounding Memorial Day, it is appropriate to remember those fallen service members for the entire week. I have with me Josh, a place of yours.
Thanks. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to thank you for this proclamation, on behalf of myself as a veteran and in the Veteran Service Department. It's a pleasure for us to be able to remember those of our brothers and sisters who have passed. We celebrate Armed Forces Day, those who are still currently serving, we celebrate Veterans Day, those who've gotten out, but this is the time where we can all reflect on those that we've lost and thank them for their service. So thank you very much for this proclamation. I'd like to introduce Dick Taylor now.
Again Chairman Scrivner, and fellow board members, Supervisor Gleason, thank you again for this opportunity. It's this time of year where we pay tribute to those that, in Kern County, adorn, four blocks east of here, there's the Wall of Valor. There's over 1,000 names of Kern County citizens that are on that wall, from World War I to present, those that died in Iraq and Afghanistan, and both Josh and I have had friends that have passed away in wars. We have members of our county family, whose family members were killed in action. And it's a time to never forget that, and it's been said by elected officials in the past, that, you know, we're just one generation away from losing our freedom and forgetting those that paid that price. And it is, it's a time to, I think, if many of us that we served with that are no longer with us, could see today, they'd want us to make them proud, to go on, to stand up for what's right, to do the right thing, to stand for the principles that made this country great, and that's the reason that they went to battle. They died for their buddy right next to them. They didn't go out in the field that day just thinking, hey, I'm going to die today. But when you sign up to go into military, when you raise your right hand, and many of you have family members serving and have served, and that's part of the obligation you make. And so I think we're very fortunate in this county, because my counterparts in other parts of the state and other parts of the nation are intrigued and impressed with the level of support that this county, its elected officials, both at the county level, and the state, and the federal level, and the city level, they support our veterans and remember those that, on this day coming up Memorial Day, that we remember. So real quick, in wrapping up, we have two events going on this weekend, Saturday specifically, at the Bakersfield National Cemetery, 9:00 AM Saturday morning, that, May 27, open to the public at 8:00 AM. We're going to have a flag placement of anybody that has family members interred up there. At 9:00 AM, the ceremony starts. Our own chairman is going to be the keynote speaker, as well as Supervisor Maggard is going to be in the program as well. And also at 1:30 in the afternoon, down here at the Kern Veterans Memorial, by the Wall of Valor, four blocks from here, we're going to have a ceremony that, again, will salute those, our fallen heroes in Kern County. We'll also be joined by many of our elected officials, and our own Sheriff Donnie Youngblood, who's an Army veteran of Vietnam War, will be our guest speaker. So we invite the public, and there's tons of things going on this weekend as well. Monday, there's, most of the private cemeteries have services, and we hope to see you, and we hope you take time, and our community takes time, to remember those that aren't with us anymore, and those that they don't get to celebrate Memorial Day, because they went on, and they served, and they gave their lives so that we can live in freedom. And I want to thank you again, thank you again for your incredible support of our veterans and your support of our department. Thank you again.
Thanks, Dick. Appreciate you.
Next item on our agenda is item number two. This is a proclamation to proclaim June 2017 as Kern County Animal Services No Kill Effort Awareness Month, and Supervisor Perez will make this presentation.
Thank you, Chairman, very proudly. Motion on proclamation.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Thank you, the vote is approved, all ayes.
Good morning, Chairman, and members of the board. Today is really very special and unique time in Kern County. We are recognizing today an effort that has been put forward by this board. My colleagues will remain as part, one of the greatest parts of the legacy of this board, I am certain of it. It is an honor to make this proclamation, recognizing June 2017 as Kern County Animal Services No Kill Effort Awareness Month. As you know, this particular issue has been one of my top priorities since I began serving as county supervisor. It is very near and dear to my heart, as I am aware it is to yours as well. I am extremely proud that our animal services, in conjunction with remarkable partners in this community, continues to work towards the goal and commitment to be no kill by During the month of June, there are several events that Animal Services will be hosting to increase awareness of our no-kill efforts, including an adoption event at Chewy's Restaurant, $10 spay and neuter voucher day, and the kickoff of the Tales for Tales, that's T-A-L-E for T-A-I-L, Tales for Tales, reading program, which brings children into the shelter to read to the animals, creating a positive experience and an increase in future adoptions and responsible pet ownership. The Just For One Day event to be held on June 11 will probably be the most powerful. There will be no euthanasia that day, and the shelter will be open for 11 hours, and adoptions will be only $11. I commend, from the bottom of my heart, Kern County Animal Services Department, led by our fearless leader, Nick Cullen, and his incredible partnership with Zaxco of Marley's I hope that we reach our goal by 2020. Certainly, this board is committed to doing so. I encourage the community to take part in the Animal Services events this month and all year long. I join my colleagues in proclaiming June 2017 as Kern County Animal Shelter's No Kill Effort Awareness Month, and thank the many, many community partners. Is Liz Keough here?
She's not here.
Many, many partners and friends in this community who have made this a priority, some of them for decades, and whose legacy will live on through not only this proclamation, but the efforts and love for our four-legged friends. Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern, State of California officially, proudly, and loudly proclaims June 2017 as Animal Services No Kill Efforts Awareness Month in Kern County. This recognition has been entered into the official board minutes, signed by our Honorable Chairman Zach Scrivner.
The floor is yours, Mr. Cullen.
Good morning. Chairman Scrivner, members of the board, Nick Cullen, Director, Kern County Animal Services. Thank you for those kind words, Supervisor Perez. I wouldn't use the term fearless, especially when you're standing up here. First and foremost, I'd like to personally and on behalf of the department, thank the board before me. I mean, I don't think the board gets enough credit for the support that they lend to our department to achieve the goals that we feel are important. I think it's extraordinary that a board feels that strongly about animals. You don't see that very often for municipalities, as far as animal welfare is concerned. I just wanted to make sure that that gets announced. There was some talk this morning of a protest, and I wanted to make sure that the staff knew and the volunteers knew, this is not a protest. This is a show of support for this activity. If you recall, in December of 2015, I did approach this board, and I presented some steps that we would take to some they hopefully achieve no-kill in our shelters, in county shelters. Those steps included administering a foster program for underage animals, a volunteer program that engages the community. We included proactive animal adoptions, a targeted low-income spay and neuter program. Those are just a few to name, just to name a few of those programs. At the time, we had just wrapped up a calendar year, which was 2015, by getting more animals out alive than ever before. But the sad fact is, we were still responsible for putting down over 6,600 animals that year. In 2015, we did begin to see significant progress. Euthanasia in county shelters dropped by almost 1,500 animals in that one year, but we were still responsible for putting down over 5,100 animals. This year, we're on pace to further reduce the euthanasia of shelter animals by another 1,100. The programs I mentioned above require community engagement. We talk about community engagement, I think there's quite a few people who support the movement. If we could all maybe stand up. This is a partnership. It's a partnership between this community, the people that are standing behind me, my department, the County Board of Supervisors, and the nonprofit animal rescues like Marley's Mutts that work tirelessly at our shelter and others to save animals from a shelter death. We asked to declare June as Kern County Animal Services No Kill Effort Awareness Month to accomplish just that, to bring awareness to the fact that this effort is being made, and that you can support the effort by adopting shelter animals, by volunteering for a local animal shelter, donating to a local animal shelter, not just ours, anyone in your community. Donating, fostering, taking advantage of the spay and neuter resources that exist in the community, in your specific district, take advantage of those resources. On June 10, as Supervisor Perez said, Animal Services will reduce the cost of our low-income spay and neuter vouchers to just $10. The City of Bakersfield will have representatives at our Fruitvale facility issuing vouchers to city residents as well. Everybody's on board. Also, as Supervisor Perez mentioned, on June 11, we will be open for 11 hours, all of our animal adoptions will be just $11. So if you don't have an animal to fix, then what are you waiting for? Come out on the 11th and adopt an animal. I was responsible, in my former position with the county, I was a shelter supervisor. I was responsible for making the list of animals that lived and died. I did that for about three and a half years. Those decisions, and the decisions of all those individuals that have to add animals to a euthanasia list, are the reasons why this is a noble cause. I believe it was Gandhi who said, "The greatness of a nation can be judged by the way its animals are treated." The citizens of Kern County have illustrated that they care deeply for animals, as our progress shows, and that is only one of the many reasons that makes Kern County great. Again, I appreciate the support that the board is giving to the department. We're allowed to seek out our hopes and dreams as a department, and we have you to thank for that. And with that, I'm going to have ask Zach up to say a few words.
Thank you Supervisor Perez, and to the rest of the supervisors, thank you very much for having us here. This means a lot, this means a lot, and I certainly do have some butterflies going on, because this is such an impactful moment, and this will be remembered for decades. This is, the reason I stand here before you guys, as a whole, not sick individual, is because my life was saved by a dog. My dog, Marley, saved my life in 2008, when I was dying from end-stage liver disease. You know, I spent two months at Bakersfield Memorial Hospital, I got admitted to a transplant program at Suter Sinai, and the only reason I'm here, and the only reason I haven't either died from liver failure or killed myself, was because of my dogs. Dogs are medicine. They are medicine. And the ability of dogs to make people's lives better, and for us to expand on the human-canine bond is a really, it's an, if we nurture that bond and seek to continue to expand on how dogs can help people, there's no end to what they can accomplish. And when it comes to no-kill, as far as the idea of no-kill is concerned, Nick, it took a lot of guts for Nick to say what he did in 2015 and throw the idea of no-kill around. When I started in rescue in 2012, we euthanized 25,000 dogs in this county. Think about that from a tax perspective. It costs around $200 to euthanize a dog, times 25,000, not necessarily considering municipal shelters who don't do counting. So we're talking about just three county shelters, not to mention the shelters in Shafter, Wasco, Delano, McFarland, Cal City. It was a virtual Holocaust happening in this area, and when I first moved here, all people talked about was heat, smog, and, you know, animal control crisis. And we can't do much about the heat, we're working on the smog, and we're certainly doing everything we can to fix the euthanasia issue. And it's, we have to look at it as, in military terms. This is a war that we've been losing, that we've been getting, you know, we've been getting spanked in this war for a long time, and we haven't had a strategic approach, we haven't had any sort of approach, other than take them in, and then have a guy like Nick, who we, in many cases, vilify and malign, have to make a list, where at the end of the day, several dozens, if not hundreds, of dogs are euthanized. There's been no strategic approach. There's been a disconnect between rescues and shelters, there's been a disconnect between rescuers and county employees. That disconnect no longer continues. I consider Nick calling a brother, that's how we address ourselves, when we text one another, you know. Additionally, the availability of Supervisor Scrivner and Supervisor Perez, you know, I can send them text messages on what we're trying to do, as far as the strategy is concerned, and we are always, you know, received well, and that banter is back and forth, they are approachable and addressable, and we need your guys' help. That war that we were losing kind of faded into a stalemate, kind of like World War I, for any of you history fans, where for many years, we were, you know, in this kind of stalemate, where not a lot of progress was made, and we couldn't tell if we were losing or what. After Nick threw down the gauntlet, made that proclamation, we've gained the upper hand, and there's been steady, consistent improvement. But that improvement has to happen, again, from a strategical standpoint. We have to galvanize the public, we have to mobilize troops. This community has to be, you know, we have to get as many people involved as possible, and that's not just going to happen through spay and neuter. So we, Marley's Mutts is an organization focused on achieving no-kill through a multitude of strategical ideas and operations, and those operations include Miracle Mutts, which is our educational wing, a couple dozen of those dogs are downstairs, that's two and a half dozen therapy dogs who have gone from rescue, all the way through with their 50 hours of community service. They now serve the greater Kern County region, they've been to more than 80 nonprofit organizations and schools, they educate on a weekly basis. If everybody here would pick up your June calendar, there's a couple of Miracle Mutts events on here, but if we had the Miracle Mutts events on this calendar, there wouldn't be enough room. So they operate, our educational wing is operating at least three days a week, whether it be at the mission at Kern County, doing our 12-step program, whether it be at different cancer centers, the Valley Achievement Center for Autistic Children, whether it be at, as you see here, we have a Barks and Books program, which we've been doing for years, both at Beal and up in Tehachapi. And these are programs that are going to educate the next generation on animal welfare and compassionate care. And what we have in Kern County across cultural lines, this isn't a Hispanic problem, this isn't a white problem, this isn't a black problem, this is an access-to-services problem, this is an income problem, this is a vulnerable populations problem. And I've seen just as many wealthy people in, you know, the Northwest and up in that area surrendering labradoodles at the shelter, as I have dogs in Lamont who haven't been cared for, who are running around with no tags on. The problem is pandemic across our culture, across our county, and unless we address it in the form of a movement, where we get everybody involved, viewing animals as, not possessions, but as family members, animals as something that can provide great enrichment to our lives, that will benefit us in so many ways, and that can teach us so many lessons. The minute I started to live, was when I started to pay attention to my dogs. That's the minute I, that's the moment where I really started to embrace life, is when I started to accept the unconditional love of my dogs, and listen to the lessons they were trying to teach me. So that's what we do with our Miracle Mutts, with our education program. Anywhere, we were just speaking with Behavioral Health about using our dogs in some of their programs, and you'd be amazed, we have, Liz Cover, who's our director, has a master's degree in this subject, and what dogs can do as medicine for people is unbelievable. We have four prison programs currently operating, three of them in Kern County, which are doing amazing things that will, I know, prevent recidivism, and also do a lot to showcase the human-canine bond, what people are capable of, and really provide hope where there is none, to dark places. I'd like you guys also, I'd like to also highlight on this calendar, all of the spay and neuter events that we have happening. We're not going to achieve no-kill unless we have relentless, relentless spay and neuter. And that has to be in the east, where nobody wants to go, but we're going there, and I was talking to Zach and Dawn, who's our, she is fearless, Nick, Nick knows this. She's our spay and neuter director, who's developed a team of a couple dozen volunteers for spay and neuter, with five, you know, Hispanic translators, with every, I mean, again, it's organized like a military operation, and we're making great progress. We've fixed 300 dogs in that area, and I guarantee you that by next year, we're not going to have the same numbers coming out of that region. And this calendar, if we continue to keep calendars like this, with the supervisor's support, we will achieve no-kill by 2020. If we continue to have the supervisor's support in achieving no-kill, we're not going to have to spend millions and millions and millions of dollars on animal control, and millions of dollars euthanizing dogs. We can spend that money elsewhere, and in your districts where you'd rather spend the money on veterans' issues or on children's issues. We should not be spending countless amounts of money just to kill dogs in Kern County. And we do that, like I said, through spay and neuter, through education, through rescue and rehab, and through your support. So I hope you guys will join us in mobilizing to achieve no-kill. I love the direction we're headed, I couldn't be more proud of this county. When I first moved to Bakersfield, I was a doubter. I was a big-time doubter in this community. I didn't know what it was about, I didn't understand it, I was from Hermosa Beach, California. But it has changed my mind, I've never been part of a more terrific, wonderful community that knows how to rally around a cause and make something happen. And with the board of supervisor's support, and, you know, I know our constituency will follow through, if you guys will follow through, and we'll get it done. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
That was fantastic. Mr. Cullen and Mr. Scow, thank you both for your leadership on this issue, and there's a lot of faces in the audience that are part of this effort, and so we see you, we appreciate all of you, and we're excited about this new initiative. Thank you so much. Okay, next on our agenda, under public request, item number three, request of Roland Meyer, Executive Director, First Five Kern, to address the board concerning First Five Kern's annual report. Come on up.
Thank you Chairman Scrivner and Board of Supervisors. Those are two tough acts to follow, but again, we're not any less passionate about kids zero to five and their families, so it gives me a great opportunity to let the county know, and each of you know, what we are doing. This is a little different, this will be about a cost-benefit analysis that we're working on, that will really help us drive, as our funds decrease, we really get an idea of where we're getting the most bang for the buck. And we're real proud to introduce Dr. Wachter Wang from Cal State Bakersfield, who is our principal investigator, and he will give you some of the data, and where, trends and things that we're going, so thank you for allowing us to do this. And we're real proud to introduce Dr. Woktor Wang from Cal State Bakersfield, who is our principal investigator. And he will give you some of the data and where trends and things that we're going. So thank you for allowing us to do this.
Thank you, Roland. Good morning, Mr. Chair and honorable members of the board. As the principal investigator, it is my pleasure to present a cost-benefit analysis for First Five Kern Services in Kern County. Over 18 years ago, First Five Kern Commission was created by this board following the passage of Proposition 10 to administer trust fund for early childhood support. In this presentation, the cost-benefit considerations are confirmed by our trend data at both program and commission levels. At the program level, the cost was tracked by the actual program spending noted as APS on this slide. The benefit was configured by the market value of service delivery, which was the ratio of per-service benefit times the completed service count on CSC. At the commission level, additional benefit come from First Five Kern's support for external fund leverage. See the highlight part for EFL, expected fund leverage. Following the local strategic plan, First Five Kern funded 41 programs, 14 in child health, 17 in family functioning, and 10 in child development. Programs in child health and family functioning are more diversified. We have chosen four programs for illustration. Based on the latest result from last year, the benefit-cost ratio for those programs surpassed one, indicating that the benefit has outweighed the cost. In particular, with the commission support, a higher benefit-cost ratio was achieved through persistent effort on fund leverage for program sustainability. As shown in this slide, all programs ended last funding cycle with a benefit-cost ratio larger than two. In other words, for every dollar invested by the state, more than $2 benefits were generated by those programs. Under the commission leadership, this slide shows the result of fund leverage across those programs. Altogether, the four programs raised nearly $3 million over the past six years. In contrast, 10 programs in child development are homogeneously classified into three domains according to the state report glossary. The table confirmed outreach effort on service delivery in remote communities such as South Fork, Wind in the Willows, and Lost Hills. Between last and the current funding cycles, the benefit-cost ratio increased in all report domains of child development. In fiscal year 2014-2015, the ratio was under 1.5. In the following year, the benefit outweighed the cost over 2.5 times across all categories. The improvement of cost-benefit, benefit-cost ratio was much needed to cope with the shortfall of the state revenue decline. Since 2000, we had more than 50% loss of Proposition 10 funding, leaving the per-child funding at around $300 each year. In contrast, similar programs from federal head start initiative received over $8,000 of annual funding per child. To use the limited funding resources in much-needed areas, First Five Kern is holding 12 town hall meetings to solicit community input on the future priorities. All the meetings were completed up to last week. The information gathering will help strengthen a sustainable system for young children in Kern County. In addition to addressing the local needs, we follow the professional practice on the result dissemination. Similar to NSF's use of two evaluation criteria, intellectual merit and broad impact, we broadened our program impact by making seven presentations at national conferences, including the annual meetings of American Educational Research Association, American Public Health Association, and the National Association for the Education of Young Children. With IRB support, we also contributed 11 publications to enrich the current literature. Seven of the reports were peer-reviewed and published by the Education Resource Information Center of the U.S. Department of Education. Four articles were disseminated in scholarly journals, including the Journal of Social Service Research, Ambulatory Surgery, and Evaluation and Program Planning. Those efforts have gained the attention of the professional community. A search of the EBSCO database, as shown in this slide, indicated citation of First Five Kern in 18 new publications. In summary, under the commission leadership, First Five Kern has funded effective programs in child health, family functioning, and child development with a well-justified return to the state investment according to the cost-benefit analysis. We also broadened the program impact by following and leading the professional practice on the result dissemination. Mr. Chair, you and other honorable members of the board served as a commissioner at one point in time, now or in the past. On behalf of the youngest children in Kern County, we thank you for your professional leadership. We're open for questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions or comments from members of the board? Seeing none. Excellent presentation. Thank you very much for all of your efforts.
Thank you for the time.
Great to see you guys. Keep up the good work. Thanks so much. We do need a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Please cast your votes. Go onto your voice vote. Okay, please cast your votes.
Thank you. The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next on our agenda is public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter, not on this agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question for clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the board at a later date. So at this time, I'll ask if anyone has a public presentation. We ask you to state your name, and please observe our two-minute time limit. Good morning.
Good morning, Honorable Chairman and Honorable Board. My name is Curtis James Bingham, Sr., treaty evangelist for our Lord and Savior, God Almighty, Jesus Christ, who truly is the only begotten Son of our holy heavenly Father, God Almighty. I'd just like to acknowledge you and thank you, and let you know that the wisdom of God is available to you in a mighty way. And our supervisor is the overseer, so your guy's position is very blessed. I just wanted to come in and say, anytime you build a new city about anything, you have to have the law and the fire. If you want to keep it up, keep it looking good, we have to have them. We see a lot of people washing cars around town because they're trying to make money to pay for somebody's funeral. And I've been paying life insurance for a long time, never used it. A lot of people don't think they need, and they hate to pay that bill because they never get to use it. Well, the fire department is almost the same way. You have to have them, even if they don't go out each and every day. They have to be there. Because when something takes place, they got to be there. We just had a big fire on H Street. Took 40 of them to get out there and put it out. So we owe great respect to the fire. There's no telling how many buildings they have saved already just by being there. If you talk to each and every one of them, they would like to double the staff because the more they have, the safer they can keep us. They there for us. And so we should really, really recognize just how important they really are. And you take a scratch, you take a bruise, or you take getting burnt by a fire. Nobody wants to get burnt by a fire, but they willing to put their lives on the line and suffer some great trouble and tragedy just by trying to do their job. And I also like to honor our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, with the great fireman Massey. I move my arms. If God would have called me home right now, my arms would stop moving. That mean the Spirit comes out of me. So Massey, right now, according to his faith and belief in Christ, is alive. He's in a better position than us because he spiritually with the Lord. See, the bones don't move, my body. It's the Spirit in me that does. So I want to bless everybody here that cares about firemen and the great fireman Massey. Hey, according to his faith and the Lord, he's alive, up in heaven, doing far greater than us. You cannot kill the Spirit. So I want to just bless the Lord with that. And I want to bless the overseers. Your position is right behind in the order of God, your overseer. And so we all come to you as your servants because that's who we really are. And we're supposed to honor you because you earned this position. It takes the mind of God to do what you doing. You do it all year long. So I just want to bless you. Want the Lord to know, when I came before you, I did my best to bless you. And thank you, guys, for being overseers because that's what you are. And overseers are like God. In Him is yes, in you is yes, but you trying to keep everything in the right order. So I pray God continue to bless you, guys. And I pray, look out for firefighters, because the great ones, they would like to have funds every year added so they can keep us safe. In the name of Jesus, thank you, guys, very much. Okay?
Thank you. Do we have any other members of the audience who'd like to make a public presentation? Please come forward. Good morning.
Morning. My name's Dennis Nate, Chairman, distinguished members. I am here in regards to the homeless situation in District Three between the Chester Bridge and the north of the river. I am here actually representing five different barns. I run a horse barn. And when you guys go in once a year and sweep them out, they simply are back in three days. This issue has been getting worse for five years. Three years ago, we had it on national TV. Right now, as, and I'm out there every day. The reason I'm losing business is you might have mothers, daughter, young children. Well, we go out on the river to ride, and there's camps have dogs, they have a lot of drug-induced, a lot of mental health people. They come out, spook a horse, that child or whoever falls off that horse, okay, gets hurt, and welcome to California. The county neglect is, you know, and I understand the funding. When I, here's two reports. My fences have been cut. They have no respect. They know that when the county chases them to the city, city chases them to the county. All right, I've got friends on the department that risked their lives. We had a fire a month ago because of a homeless camp. When this dries up, them guys light these fires to cook, be warm, whatever. You're putting your law enforcement in danger. And I, it's costing me thousands. Like I said, I don't know where to turn. I called, and I'm here to implore you to come up with some kind of a solution. Simply sending a body there, telling these people to move on because you're using code enforcement to enforce this situation. All right. They simply go down to Beardsley. All right, when they come, and there's a group called Flood, they tell the homeless that they're coming. Get out of there. Go to Beardsley for a while. I know this for a fact. I hire the homeless sometimes to clean stalls. I get the word firsthand. Okay, firsthand. Two years ago, somebody got killed. A lady got raped. She hung herself two months ago. A 22-year-old baby, right behind my ranch. And that's, you know, sir, I don't know where to turn.
I know the Supervisor Maggard has punched in. He'd like to respond. Could you, could you spell your last name for us for the record? The clerk and I will work with her.
My name for the record is Dennis O. N. A. T. E. Junior.
Nate, okay. Thank you very much. Supervisor Maggard, please.
Thank you, Mr. Nate, for coming forward today. Mr. Nate, could you, it looks like somebody's going to give you some information. Yeah, could you come up, could you speak with Mr. Alsop? Mr. Alsop, would you wave at him? Right here, in a minute. But we'd give your information to him, your contact information, and we'll keep you posted on some efforts that we have going on. Mr. Alsop, we have, we're in the process of convening a group to try to figure out how to best handle the flood of vagrants and homeless folks that are particularly around the Oildale area. Can you tell us what the status of that group is and when we will have a report back here on what steps we might take?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Maggard, I've been speaking with both Mr. Walker and the Chairman of the Kern Homeless Collaborative, which is really the countywide group that can, that has been in existence for some time and focused on this issue. The county is a participant in that collaborative. And I am, I'm in the middle of discussing, you know, how we move forward to address the, address the homeless situation in the county.
So when do you think you'll have a specific report back to us so we can start to develop an action plan?
Soon. I'm right in the middle of having the discussions with all of these folks.
Okay. Mr. Nate, the, there are a number of problems. Sweeping people out of the river, pushing them, and they always push them north into Oildale, is not the answer. The city of Bakersfield is who does those sweeps and pushes those folks into Oildale. So that's one of the issues that we need to resolve. Another issue that we're exploring is the, what appears to be, and now I've had two other confirmations of this activity, but what may very well be Southern California putting in vans and dropping off homeless folks in Kern County.
LA.
Yeah. And one of the things that I've been told, that they're being told, is that, well, housing's cheaper there. You'll have a better life. Here's a ticket. Go to Bakersfield. So we're not going to, the difficulty is finding out how that's taking place and how to battle it. But there are numerous aspects of this we're working on. So if you'll give your contact information to Mr. Alsop, we'd like to make you aware of when some of these meetings occur. And you have firsthand experience. We'd like to hear from you what your experiences have been. And maybe your, your experience can help us find some more solutions that work. Because clearly, we are, we are losing ground as we speak. So I appreciate you bringing this forward to us.
All right, thank you.
So, yeah, you go over to Mr. Alsop. That'd be great. Thank you.
Supervisor Gleason.
Thanks, Chairman. Thank you Supervisor Maggard for bringing up those thoughts, and Mr. Nate for coming forward. Mr. Alsop, this is not just a local problem here, as you are well aware. I mean, Kern River Valley is challenged by the homeless. Ridgecrest is challenged. Everywhere I go in my district has issues relative to the issues that Mr. Nate brought up. So when we do get engaged, I would like to see a strategic perspective on how Kern County is going to manage these situations within the context of the state of California, if we need to appeal to higher authorities to get required funding or whatever we need to do. I'm all for it, and I think it's a full steam ahead on this issue. It's a big one. Thank you.
Yes, we all, we all have issues in our, in our districts, for sure. Thank you Supervisor Gleason, Supervisor Maggard. Do we have any other members of the audience who'd like to make a public presentation? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to board member announcements or reports. Okay, seeing none. Then we'll move on to item 11. This is an item under Aging and Adult Services. This is a request to accept grant from Pacific Gas and Electric in the amount of $30,000 for the cooling center program. And we have our Director of Aging and Adult Services, Lito Morello, who is going to start us off. Good morning, Mr. Morello.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Lito Morello, you're Director of Aging and Adult Services. Thank you again for this opportunity. I'm joined here today by Brett Haney, General Services. He's standing in the back up there. And representatives from PG&E, Pat Mullen, Kristen Dowd, Katie Allen, Anita Maxi, and Meredith Morford. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank PG&E for this grant. We've been operating these cooling centers since 2007, and we really couldn't operate these cooling centers without this grant. That's how essential it is. All in total now, we have about 15 cooling center sites throughout Kern County. And unlike in years past, we actually started the cooling center season a little bit early this year. We started on May 15. Through our cooling centers, our seniors and disabled adults and families have an opportunity or another avenue to go to to actually get away from the extreme heat that we face here in Kern County. This grant allows us to pay for the staffing that General Services provides to man the centers. It also allows for the waters, snacks, and games that we offer at the centers for people to enjoy in general. One of the other things the grant pays for is the transportation. We coordinate with Kern Regional Transit and get a lift to get people to these cooling centers if they so choose, free of charge. I'm proud to say that Kern County is a model. It's one of a kind in the state. I know that because we've been contacted by various counties and cities to see how we operate our cooling centers. The collaboration that we have with organizations, PG&E, General Services, and the media in general, it makes us really unique. And that's why we're getting a lot of interest in terms of how we operate down here. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank General Services, Parks Division, and their staff, particularly Leslie Wallace, for collaborating with us on this project. And from my department, Michelle And from my department, Michelle Termin, who serves as our coordinator and liaison with PG&E. Again, I'd like to thank PG&E for this continued support and partnership. And now I'll turn it over to Pat Mullen, who has a few words he'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Lito. Chairman and members of the Board of Supervisors, thanks again for allowing us to be here today. My name's Pat Mullen. As you heard, I'm the Kern Division Director for PG&E. And I'm here today, as you heard, my colleagues that have joined me today, Kristen Dowd, Anita Maxi, Meredith Morford, and Katie Allen. All of us couldn't be more pleased to be here today, representing the over 400 men and women that live and work for PG&E here in Kern County. And for us, we couldn't be more pleased to be here today, representing them, to deliver this check to Kern County Agency Aging and Adult Services. What they do is extraordinary in helping many in our community here in Kern County, and most importantly, in what they do to help some of the most vulnerable. So on behalf of the 400 men and women of Pacific Gas and Electric Company here in Kern County, we'd like to present this check to the Kern County Aging and Adult Services. And thank you. Thank you again.
It's fantastic. Thank you. Supervisor Maggert, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to just say thank you to all the folks from PG&E, but Pat, it's great to see you again. Pat is a local guy from here that has done well, and it's great to have you back representing and looking out for us folks here in Kern County. But thanks to everybody at PG&E for your generosity in this.
You bet. Thank you, Supervisor Maggert, and thank you all. And it's great to be back in Kern County. Thanks.
We, the requested action is to approve and authorize Director of Aging and Adult Services to sign all applicable documents. We have a motion to that effect.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. And now we go on to page four on our agenda. This is an item under Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. Item 23, Behavioral Health Board 2016 Annual Report. We have Bill Walker, who heads up our Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. Good morning, Mr. Walker.
Good morning. It's quite a morning of things to be covered today already. And now, hopefully, on a positive note, I have a member of our board, Mr. David Stabenfeld, who's going to present to you our annual report. David?
Welcome. Thank you very much. About eight years ago, I moved here from the Midwest. And one of the questions I asked was how could I involve myself in the community? And the opportunity came through District Four Supervisor Couch's office to be interviewed for the position on this board. And about three years ago, I joined it and was overwhelmed, overwhelmed by the scope of the work, overwhelmed by the nature of how it is that this county has so many needs. But then I started listening to our responses. And through the work of Director Walker and all the staff and workers and peers of the Behavioral Health Services, I've discovered that healing and hope are taking place. And that is crucial for all of us. One of my favorite songs when I think about annual reports comes from the Broadway show Rent. The question at the very top of the show is this. How do you measure a year in the life? So when you look at the annual report, I want you to look a bit beyond the statistics and dig in under and ask the question, how do you measure a year in the life of an organization? There's about 700 employees with the services. But if you go over to the Consumer Family Learning Center, what you discover is there's just a plethora of folk who are being helped to find their place in life. Most of us hope to find a place and purpose and meaning for life. And sometimes it's difficult. When you listen to the stories of those who are homeless, those who are hoping for recovery from addiction, those who live in families where mental illness is troubling and traumatizing, and sometimes you feel like there's nobody, and then you can call the crisis hotline. Then you can go to the learning center. Then you can go to a boarding care where we help those who staff those places with training and help and supervision. Please take time to look beneath and ask the question, how do you measure a year in the life? And as you do that, know how much we are grateful to you for your support, and we continue to look forward to the collaboration for the well-being of our county. Thank you very much.
Mr. Stabenfeld, thank you very much, and thank you to all the members of the Behavioral Health Board for their efforts and dedication to the department. Also, Mr. Walker, to you and all of your staff for the tremendous service that they provide for the citizens of Kern County. Ask if there are any members of the audience that would like to make a comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll return to the board.
You just need a motion to rescind.
Yes, we do.
I'll move that, but I also want to thank you for your service. And it does of my heart good when we make appointments and then we see them stand up there and make the kind of presentation you just made. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. That brings us to item 24, also under Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. This is the proposed addition of four administrative coordinator, one coordinator of administrative and legislative analyst, one deputy director of Mental Health Services Department for Clinical Services, one office services specialist, one senior human service, excuse me, senior human resources specialist, one confidential, one fiscal support specialist, one senior administrative and fiscal services officer, one computer lab instructor, one help desk technician, 123, one senior systems analyst, one marketing promotions associate, one mental health planning analyst, two medical assistant, 12, one mental health recovery specialist, 123, one substance abuse specialist, 12, one office services technician, and one program coordinator, positions and budget unit 4120, effective June 10, 2017. Fiscal impact, 2,553,577 for the fiscal year 2016-17 is 139,000. Mr. Walker.
Thank you. You know, my mind is still really on some of the presentations that went on, so I want to first say that my deputy was here, and he went out with the gentleman who had questions. And we actually are reconstituting a homeless outreach team after having conversations with Mr. Alsop and understanding Supervisor Maggert's concerns that were raised in previous meetings. We're reassigning some staff, and so we're going to actually work directly with that gentleman and his ranch. And, and as other things get into play, we'll at least be able to do something, hopefully within the next week or two, even if it's just to assign a staff to work with him and other, other people in that area, to just kind of walk around and look at how we can connect them better to services that we provide. Now on to, the other thing that really stood before I even do this presentation is the no-kill discussion, and then there was also the vets' presentation about vets being lost, and then the gentleman who made the presentation talking about someone committing suicide. We also are doing an initiative called Zero Suicide, and it is the goal to try to unite all, all entities that touch people medically, dentist, makes no difference, and connect everyone together to try to reduce the suicide rate. So it's interesting that, as I'm listening to today's presentation, and then, of course, even the gentleman himself, he hit homeless, he hit substance abuse, he hit depression, he hit suicide. And so I think the community gets it. And so I'm here before you with the proposal to add 21 positions. So I need to stop and pause for a second, not so much for the board, but I think for the public, because the question should be asked, why in the world should this department be adding 21 positions? Why in the world are they adding positions that aren't therapists and outreach workers and that sort of thing? I don't see any of that hardly at all in this. And why are they doing that when the other departments are taking cuts? So although it is in the letter in more detail, I'd like to just point out that the Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services is not a general fund department. Almost all of our funds are categorical allocations through state and federal dollars, meaning that we are given funds specifically for the task of mental health and substance abuse treatment, prevention, and services, from inpatient all the way down to street evangelism. And we have to use the money for those sources. And we have to live within those means. If those dollars go up, we grow. If they go down, we have to reconstitute ourselves to that size. So there, in adding these positions, there is absolutely no risk to the general fund, and there will be no future risk. When our dollars have gone up and down, and I actually started as a volunteer in services in 1978, I don't believe there's a time where we have ever gone and asked the board to bail us out if our dollars ever changed. Second, number one way that we, we bring money into the county is through the fees for the services we provide. We bill Medi-Cal or other sources and bill over $60 million for services in this, in this, in this county. So that explains why Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services is adding positions, because we are a growing department, and it's our responsibility to grow the infrastructure of service. So at this particular time, we are, we are growing to provide the oversight of the services we provide, while at the same time, through contracted services, we are actually growing the provision of services. In the next year, by the end of the next year, there will be at least four contracted systems of service at the value of over $3 million each in greater Bakersfield. And each of you that have, you already know you have clinics in your geographic areas, each of those clinics will then be evaluated for, based on the number of beneficiaries, how big should the staffing be? And so this time next year, I'm hoping to be able to tell you how much growth we are able to sustain in each of the clinics and greater Bakersfield. But to do that, we have to add the oversight staff, and that's why what you see in the department, and the department is the sole responsibility for the oversight, you see more of the administrative-type staff being added because the service delivery staff are being added to our contracted system. Therefore, it is recommended that your board approve the proposed addition of 21 positions and budget unit 4120, effective June 10, 2017, and refer the matter to the Human Resources Division to amend department positions and salary schedule. The county administrative office has reviewed and concurs with this request, and I am available for any questions.
Mr. Walker, thank you, and, and thank you for highlighting the fact that this doesn't have a general fund impact. I would like to ask your opinion. The Sheriff's Department, our jails, et cetera, is a department that has a significant general fund impact, and specifically that jail-based competency team. Do you, I see this as something that will save us money in that respect because we are, we know that folks are often arrested and incarcerated because of mental health issues, because of substance abuse problems. And so here we have state and federal funds that I think are helping to stem the tide of these types of problems which do impact our general fund. Wanted to know your opinion on that.
I, first off, let me say I'm totally supportive of the sheriff and the services that they already do with us in both mental health and substance abuse. And as they look to leverage the use of their beds through jail-based competency or other, other bed options, federal bed options, we are right there at the table with them, looking at how we can provide services for people incarcerated. At the same time, the gentleman who stood up in front of us, and he talked about the problems with the ranches, those people out there are people who are likely and end up in Laredo and some of those places. And so part of this plan also addresses trying to get more prevention out in those areas, because if, if no one does anything with those individuals, they're eventually going to get swept up and arrested, get a record, not be able to get employed. I mean, it's that downward spiral. And so one of the things I've been really trying to push is more and more prevention-side services, which is hard the way the dollars are funded, but I actually think that's the most, the best thing to do is, what we can do in the jail is fantastic, but also to really try to build for the, like what you heard today, more services for that area of need.
Thank you. Supervisor Press?
Thank you so much. Mr. Walker, Mr. Stabenfeld, I really appreciate your conviction in these matters and your contribution to eudaimonia, which I know you have a lifelong dedication to the well-being of a community, all of its inhabitants, that looking different from person to person, of course, but generally a well-being for all is something I know both of you have committed so much of your life to, and I'm so grateful for it. Bill, I've just completed the process through the prison board of reading all of the applications around the state of California for Prop 47 money. So as you know, voters pass Prop 47, reduce some crimes to misdemeanors, controversial, of course, but nonetheless, it is law. And through the process of Prop 47, the state of California has realized about $110 million in savings to prison costs. And in so doing, those dollars are now being reinvested back into the community through this process. So I was absolutely stunned, heartbroken, depressed at some moments to read through the applications for services around the state of California. I really didn't know how significant the issue of mental health well-being is from our children to our adolescents, young adults, and of course, throughout our entire population. It was striking to me. In particular, folks that grow up in violent communities, poor neighborhoods, the likelihood of mental health issues and disorders is through the roof, and so much more prevalent than we see in communities that are more stable, more middle-class, if you will. It is, the correlation is absolutely striking and undeniable. And so this process has been a heavy-hearted one for me. We will be passing out those dollars in the next month. It's been a long process. It included folks that are formerly incarcerated, folks that suffer from mental health disorders. And so it has been one that's been very enlightening. But what we are learning and what is becoming commonplace, which you have been arguing for so long, is the prevalence of mental health issues from a young and early age dramatically and tragically impact a population almost irreparably, if not for early intervention, prevention, and aggressive efforts by people who are committed to these principles of eudaimonia, stick together and be smart and make the taxpayer, or the pack, or the tax dollar, rather, stretch as, as much as we possibly can. So, you know, I just wanted to put you up to speed on that, Mr. Walker. I know you've been watching that process, but we finish that on Monday, and we'll be handing those dollars out very soon. So I'm excited to see the improvements in the overall system and the delivery of services to 39 million people, sixth-largest economy in the world. It certainly seems we can do better, and we must. So thank you.
Supervisor Press, through the chair, thank you for those kind words, and yes, we're very much hoping to see Prop $47 cascade into this county and across the whole state. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any members of the audience that would like to make comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll return to the board. The requested action is to approve and refer to Human Resources to amend the departmental positions and salary schedule.
I'll move through.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Next item on our agenda is item 69 on page 10. This item was pulled off of the consent agenda by Supervisor Maggert. It's a proposed resolution authorizing the permanent closure of the Kern County Library Northeast Branch located at 3725 Columbus Street, effective June 1, 2017, for a move to newly remodeled branch building located at 2671 Oswald Street to be opened to the public on July 1, 2017. I see we have Andy Apple here, who is our interim director of the Kern County Library. Supervisor Maggert, would you like to make a comment first? Supervisor Maggert, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. When we were concluding last year's budget cycle, I was notified by our then-director of our libraries that the Northeast Branch would be closed. There were concerns she had about the nature of the lease that was there, the cost, we had more space than we needed. She said it just wasn't working, and she was going to recommend that it be closed. That caused a panic on my part, and we began to look for alternatives. And as this item is on our agenda today, it was on consent, and I want to make sure that no one in the public has the misfortune of misunderstanding what's going on, because a great thing has happened. And that great thing is that our, as I began to look around for some alternative locations for us, Greg and Mary Bynum stepped up. And they have a shopping center that's in northeast Bakersfield, actually very close to where the, the current location is located, library location is located. Mary serves on our, you can help me, Andy, is it friends of the?
Kern County Library Foundation.
Thank you.
She's on, she's a board member.
On, on our foundation board to the library. She has a passion for libraries and making sure that, that children and people have resources that they need. They stepped up in a huge way, and I'm sure we'll have another... They stepped up in a huge way, and I'm sure we'll have another opportunity to thank them. But as this was on consent, I want to make sure it was pulled so that you could give a little bit more explanation about what's happening, and we can take the opportunity to thank the Bynums for helping us find a way to have a lease that's affordable and a space that's more tailored to what our needs are. So could you just make sure the public is aware of what's going to happen?
Absolutely. So we are requesting that your board closes the branch at its current location all of June to reopen on Saturday, July 1. That'll be a very celebration-oriented weekend, the Fourth around the corner, in our new location, as Supervisor Maggard stated, which is next to In Shape and Kern Schools and PetSmart. So we're looking forward to the opportunities in that area, the businesses to partner with. I think they're excited to have us come. I am looking for manual labor to help us move an entire branch this summer, so please connect with me if you know of anybody, scout troops, Girl Scout troops, or yourselves. Let me know. We have a whole, since we aren't able to do summer reading in June, we are really jammed pack in July with summer reading at our new location. And just as you said, Supervisor Maggard, I think we'll probably have a grand opening and be able to thank the Bynums at that time.
Good. Thank you very much. I just want to make sure the public is not afraid the Northeast Branch is not permanently closing, it's moving to a better location. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Are there any members, other members of the audience who would like to make comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. That brings us to the conclusion of our business on the AM agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session to consider items 97, 98, 99, and 100 under the county administrative office.
So moved.
We are adjourned.